Okay, welcome folks. Tonight is March 22nd, 2010. This is a public hearing for the City of Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight, as you can see, we only have four members. So any petition requires unanimous approval, meaning all four members have to approve the vote. Any denial will result in a denial of your petition because for a quorum, we need all four unanimously when there's only four members here. As a result of that, anybody wishing to seek a continuance tonight, we will grant you a continuance until we have a night where there's a full body present, or at least more members, if you so wish. Otherwise, you're welcome to go forward tonight, just as you would. The first petition is ZB 2009 000 0045. That's a special permit telecommunications from Clear Wireless LLC regarding the property at 403 Andover Street. This is for the installation of telecommunications panels, antennas, additional antennas and related equipment inside a stealth steeple, housing and related equipment on the side of a church for Clear Wireless. Since our last meeting, we had discussed the possibility of alternate locations. We did receive a correspondence today from the law firm of Prince Lobel by Scott Lacy, and I'll read it into the record. Dear Members, this form represents the applicant in connection with its application pending before the City of Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals to install a wireless communication facility at the property. Subsequent to our last meeting, the applicant worked with the city council and city solicitor's office to obtain a license agreement to float balloons at 451 First Street Boulevard, also known as Duck Island, and at Carley Stadium, 424 Douglas Road. Per the agreement, the balloons were scheduled to be flown on Saturday, March 13th, from 8:00 until 12:00. However, due to the extreme weather involving strong winds and heavy rain, that didn't occur, and the applicant was unable to successfully float the balloons to the required heights. We are in the process of trying to reschedule the balloon floats with the city council. Therefore, to provide the applicant sufficient time to reschedule the balloons and provide our subsequent analysis to the board's consultant, David Maxim, we respectfully request that this board continue the public hearing regarding this matter to its April 26th meeting agenda. We've confirmed with David Maxim that he will be available that night. So if there's anybody here wishing to speak on this petition, I'll give you an opportunity to do so since you came down here. But it looks as though they've requested by letter a continuance that will probably be granted unless there's any strong opposition to it. Kim, is it April 26th? Just to be sure, that is definitely because that's the... Okay. So the next meeting will be April 26th. Is anybody here which should speak either in favor or opposition to this petition? Right. But I wanted to be clear that that's the meeting that they're looking for, April 26th. Okay. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Ken Gordon, and I'm with the church located at 403 Andover Street, and would like to speak in favor, but I can wait until the April 26th meeting and when the... if that's what the board chooses to decide for the continuing. So I can maybe speak at that time if...
Okay. And that's... I think the board is going to continue it to that date, and you're welcome to come back that date. There'll be no further public notice, but you're welcome to come back that date and tell us whatever you'd like.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I need a motion to continue?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue till April 26th, 2010.
I need a second?
Second.
And roll call, Kim, please.
Continue.
Continue?
Continue.
Continue. Okay. This matter has been unanimously continued to April 26th at 6:30 PM here at this building, in this office, in this room. There'll be no further notices. Anybody wishing to speak either in favor or opposition to the petition is welcome to come that evening. The next item on the agenda tonight is another continuance. This is ZB 2010 000 004, a special permit request regarding signs. The applicant is Hazelwood Hopkins, signed permit consultant, 47 Marshit Road, also known as 49.1 Marshit Road. This is located in a light industrial zone to allow the replacement of an existing internally illuminated wall sign for standard electric supply. Welcome, ma'am.
Welcome. Good evening. I'm Hazelwood Hopkins, for the record, to Phoebe Way, Worcester, Mass. And I'm before you tonight to offer you a revised sign, and I'm hoping that you have received a revised recommendation from Rachel Kisker.
We did. And if I could just read in that she represents that you have discussed this by telephone with her?
Yes.
That the letter size has been reduced, that the entire sign size has been reduced, and the cabinet size has been reduced, as well as the margins around the text have been increased, the text spacing, font, et cetera, will match the company's current logo, and the applicant has submitted this new drawing that reflects those changes. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, and I have additional colored drawings if you'd like me to pass them out for the board's review.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
We did meet with her conditions to reduce the letter height, as you stated, reduce the size of the cabinets. It's a 24-square-foot cabinet now. She wanted more space around the graphics, and we've provided that. What I have passed out is exactly what she looked at when we discussed making the changes.
Okay. So what you would agree to is the three-foot by eight-and-a-half, by eight feet, one-and-a-half inches, 24-square-feet, eight-and-a-quarter letter height?
That's correct.
Okay.
With a white face and blue graphics.
Okay.
And the sign is before you tonight because we're requesting the special permit for internal illumination based on this revised size and layout.
Okay. Okay. So anybody here which should speak in favor of this petition? In favor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So if you're looking at it, the sign to the right is what it will be?
That's correct.
And the dimensions are listed on top?
It's much smaller than the existing sign.
Okay. Okay. Again, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Okay. In hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition of this petition? In opposition? Okay. That's fine. Just please state your name and...
Yes. It's Carol McCarthy, 64 Blossom Street, also co-chair of the Sacred Heart Neighborhood Improvement Group. The only concern I have right now would be that, we stated last time, that is, when they're closed at night, that the light is shut off because only fear we have is that the other businesses in the area will start to see the illuminated signs, and they'll all start requesting the signs, and then that whole area will be lit up. Because even Targets at night closes, shuts their lights off when they're out, you know, when the businesses are closed.
Right.
So that's the only request that we would like...
You brought that up last time as well, and I think they agreed to do that.
And that's the only thing that we're really concerned is that the light does go off at night.
And we'll put that on as a condition.
Okay. Great.
Okay. Thank you. Ma'am?
My name's Elaine McKinney. I live at 15 Marion Street. The reason I'm here is because, right now, I can see the sign from my house. So that's what we were wondering, is if it's shut off at night, that would be great.
And it will be. It'll be our... At least that'll be our condition.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. And could you tell us when you think this would be shut off? If... I mean, they have no... I think last time, my memory is that you represented that there'd be no need to keep it on after the...
I suggested that it be put on a timer and that you make that condition so that the light would not be on overnight, but they would like to illuminate it for an hour or two after closing, but certainly not overnight.
What time do they close?
They close at 6:00.
So we could say 7:00? 8:00?
8:00 would be good for them.
Okay.
And they'll put it on a timer and extinguish the light by 8:00.
All right. That sounds reasonable. Okay. Anybody else want to comment on this petition at all before we close it for the public hearing? Okay. We'll open up to the board for discussion. Corey, anything?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad it worked out between the petitioner and planning and development. Rachel, thank you for your help. Worked out great. I don't have a problem with it. When I do make the motion, though, it will be with the condition that the light illumination does shut off at 8:00 PM. Other than that, I don't have a problem.
I guess one question is, what... When would it go on? Because they could shut it off at 8:00 PM but turn it on at 2:00?
Oh, that's a good point, isn't it?
So what...
Well, I guess it would be fair to put it on at dusk.
What time do they open?
They're open all day, but I mean, there's...
What time do they start in the morning? Is it...
Oh, 7:00 in the morning. But I don't...
Say 6:00?
There's no need to put it on in the morning, would you think?
I wouldn't think, but I mean, why don't we just say 6:00 AM? Not on before 6:00 AM and off by 8:00 PM?
I say yes. That makes sense.
Okay.
6:00 AM. Okay. Corey?
Yep. That's it, Mr. Chairman. So I will make... As I stated earlier, the hours will be 6:00 AM and 8... No later than 8:00 PM in the evening. Thank you.
And Kevin, anything?
No, Mr. Chairman.
And Rick?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the following condition, that the sign is turned on at 6:00 AM daily and turned off at 8:00 PM daily.
Okay. And I need a second?
Second.
Roll call. Kim, please.
Continue?
Approve with the condition?
Continue?
Approve with conditions?
Continue?
Approve with conditions?
Approve with conditions.
Okay, ma'am. You've been unanimously approved with that condition. I just have this... What you handed in to us, the color one, if you could just sign this and date it and hand it to Kim, that should be all set. Good luck. Thank you. Okay. The next petition that we're going to take is ZB 2010 000 006, special permit request, Sharon Kohesi, 225 Stedman Street, Unit 36. This is located in a light industrial zone, and the petition would have a special permit to allow the use of a hair salon in a light industrials district pursuant to the zoning ordinance table uses 12.4. Welcome, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Sharon Kohesi, and I'm currently looking to move my existing business that's now located at 90 Stedman Street. I'm looking to relocate to 225 Stedman Street, Unit 36.
Okay. And what's the reason for the move?
The building that I'm in currently is family-owned, and we're actually selling the building. So I'm looking to downsize and go into a smaller area, such as a condo, so that I can just concentrate on my business and not have to... Right now, it's in a freestanding building. So we have the maintenance, we have other tenants. So I was actually just looking to downsize smaller into a condo.
Okay. Are you under a lease agreement or potential lease agreement with the new owner? Or with the owner of the property where you...
My mother and I currently own the property that I'm in. We're selling the building.
No, but where you're going, I'm saying?
Oh. I'm looking to purchase the condo. I'm in the process of purchasing the condo, under contingency of being able to move my business there.
Pending approval from this board?
Yes.
Okay. Now, do you have... With the purchase and sale, would that come with any parking spots? Because, you know, we know that it's tight over there. We had another applicant before us to do something else over there, and it does seem a little bit congested.
The... I did speak to the property management company, and they do have a plan that they're going forward with come spring. And I do have a letter here that they... It's kind of a small email that they went back and forth with the owners, stating that they're looking to possibly do an assigned parking. And I did bring it to the property management attention because it was also my concern as far as parking. And I've been driving up there every day for like the last month or so to kind of check it out. And there has been plenty of parking because it would be a concern for myself as well as my clients. And there has been, you know, plenty of parking because it's an end unit. So I actually have access to the whole side, to the front, and then there are handicap accessible spots available as well.
And how many spots would you say that you need for your business?
It's only myself.
And whoever your client is?
And I usually have one client, you know, that's in, and then when that client leaves, the next client's coming.
So you're talking about three cars tops?
Yes. I also have a few photos currently of the shop that I have now to show you.
Sure. Okay. The applicant has handed in some color photos of... You're saying this is the existing shop that you work out of now? It appears to be very well-kept and neat. Pass them around to the board. Anybody else who wants to take a look at them can come up and do so? So that's basically what you'd like to do with your new place?
Yes. I'm just... I've been in that location for 10 years now, and I have a lot of clients locally as well as that travel from surrounding areas, from Lunenburg, Fitchburg. And the accessibility to through 395 is very convenient.
So what's the distance between your current shop and this proposed?
Like, not even a half a mile, maybe a quarter of a mile. It's like, very short distance.
Okay. Okay. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody opposed to this petition? In hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. We'll open up to the board for discussion. Corey?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Sharon, a question. So strictly a hair salon? You're not going to do nails or tanning, anything like that?
I do hair only.
Okay.
And also to... Just to mention, another thing that I've been looking into is my hours of operation. I run Tuesday through Friday, 12 to 9:00, and Saturdays, 8:30 to 5:00. And occasionally, I'll go in in the morning if it's an event for a client, you know, an emergency-type thing or something, you know, special occasion. So my hours kind of... The gist of my business is after 5:00, and a lot of the businesses up there are closed.
I just came from there. I understand. I see your point. Okay. Well, I think it's a good location for you, to be honest with you. I was there this afternoon, and there's several businesses that have frontage that are on this street that'll walk in, businesses like yourself, as in adult daycare of some sort there.
Yes.
Yeah. It's not out of the realm in that strip mall to see a hair salon. I don't think it'd be a detriment to the neighborhood as well, so I will support you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Kevin?
I'd support this petition as well. I think there's minimal impact on parking, and it's good to see you staying, you know, staying close to the neighborhood here.
Thank you.
Hey, Rick?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So what are your hours of operation? You said that they vary?
Their base hours are Tuesday through Friday, 12 to 9:00, and Saturdays, 8:30 to 5:00.
Okay.
On occasion, sometimes I may go in, you know, if it's a special event, a wedding or, you know, an emergency for a client to do their hair. But other than that, my base hours are 12 to 9:00, Tuesday through Friday.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know how the other board members feel, but I don't feel it's necessary to put a condition on this restricting her hours. I think they'll be fine at that location.
Yeah, I agree. And I think it's a special permit request that's allowed use with a special permit, and I think it goes well with all the businesses there, so I'm willing to support it too. So I need a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second? Second by Rick. And roll call, Kim?
Continue?
Approve.
Continue?
Approve?
Continue?
Approve.
Okay, ma'am. You've been unanimously approved. I just need you to come up and sign and date this document. You can have your pitches back as well, and good luck. Okay. And the final order of business tonight is ZB 2010 000 005. This is a request for special permit, Duville Transitional Care, Inc., at 1071 Varnum Ave., also known as 981 Varnum Ave., to allow for substantial extension of a non-conforming use of transitional hospice care for Duville Senior Care pursuant to Section 4.5.2.1 of the zoning ordinance. And my recollection is, maybe you've been before this board before for some relief?
That's correct.
And it appears as though this is simply an extension of that, of what you did last time?
Actually, last time, you were all good enough to allow us to present our request slightly out of sequence. It was very helpful with our state approval process, so we appreciate that very much. But yes, we are here tonight to discuss the non-conforming use. I am Naomi Prendergast. I'm the CEO of Duville Senior Care. And as I think you're aware, Duville Senior Care is sponsored by the Sisters of Charity of Ottawa, a couple of whom are here with us tonight. And our request really talks about our desire to extend our mission of compassionate care to seniors in the Lowell area. We currently have a 208-bed skilled nursing center, an adult day health program that serves 23 clients per day, and we also have affordable independent housing with 63 apartments for seniors as well. Back in 2007, Lowell General Hospital made the decision to close its transitional care unit, which even though it was a hospital-based skilled nursing center, it still was licensed in the same way as is Duville Senior Care. We purchased the beds to that TCU, and in fact, the Department of Public Health was very glad that we had done so because not only did it keep the use of those beds in Lowell, but it also kept it in the neighborhood on the same street and also purchased by another nonprofit. And so our plans are to construct a building adjacent to our existing nursing facility with a connection as well. And in that building, we will provide care only for short-term rehab, and also we will have four hospice suites as well. We know that technically, this is a non-conforming use. However, we're very happy to be able to say that 2010 is our 50th anniversary year. So we've been on that same location for quite a long time, and we believe we're a very good fit with the community as well. Our project has very low impact to the community. The incremental difference of these additional beds is really not significant in terms of traffic, noise, et cetera. And in fact, even though we have a 75-acre campus, we actually occupy only a very small section of that campus, and with this addition, we still will only occupy a very small percentage as well. Tonight, we do have with us our architect, Phil Dowd, who will be able to answer any questions you might have and also provide some additional information.
Good evening. I'm Philip Dowd, project architect for Levi Wanton Architects at 45 Walden Street, Concord, Massachusetts. We... When we were last here, we did briefly present this project to you, and we just completed a comprehensive site plan review with the planning board last week. I will not repeat that presentation tonight. I'm not going to dwell a long time on the design features. I want to do two things, one of which is just briefly remind you what the project is about, and secondarily, speak to the results and outcome of our planning board's site review, the conditions imposed, and how we plan to respond. Over there, we have kind of an aerial view with the existing campus represented in white, the project represented as that rather insignificant-looking yellowish rectangle there. This, of course, is Varnum Ave. Right about here, just outside the frame, is the intersection of Old Ferry and Varnum Avenue. This is, for those of you who know Varnum, of course, this is a... The park-like front yard of Duville Senior Care. And right about here, you can see the face of the chapel of the existing facility. The project, which I said is that yellow rectangle there, falls pretty much on the western driveway that currently exists, and it fits into the side of the hill. It's about 54,600 square feet on two different floors, and because of the way it is fitted into the hill, the main entrance is actually at the second-floor level. What we are doing is taking the driveway out of there and moving it up. We're running it up the hill, across a flat area, and back down into the parking lot. So there's a fairly extensive piece of site work attached to this project. Those are the basic project features. We have with us tonight members of most of aspects of our design team. We'll be more than happy to spend time discussing the details or answering any questions if that's your interest. What I do want to do, however, is turn to the planning board decision, which was favorably disposed to our design and our site plan. But during that discussion, a number of points came up, and they did suggest and include in their decision a number of decisions. And I want to say that our short answer to those conditions is absolutely yes, we are going to cooperate in each and all respects. And I'll give you a slightly longer version of that answer. The conditions included by the planning board, there were a couple that required us to cooperate with the forthcoming reviews of the fire department and the city engineers, their pending reviews and comments. Since that planning board meeting, we have indeed received city engineer comments and had one meeting with the city engineer. The various requests were that we would provide certain reports and calculations per Massachusetts regulations. Those, in fact, have already been provided. The owner will be responsible for annual operation and maintenance reports on certain systems, like the drainage system, and our site and civil engineer, John Noonan of Noonan and Dowell, is preparing what amounts to an operating manual that will guide the owner's annual operating and maintenance reports. That will all be taken care of. The city engineer was properly concerned that the contractor provide a mobilization and site management plan showing the construction interests, dewatering, and erosion control measures, that the contractor will arrange for site inspections and secure driveway permit. All of those things will happen. Finally, the engineer requests that we submit completed as-built in electronic form when the project is over. That will certainly happen, too. The team will cooperate to make sure that's true. We are expecting a review of the fire department, although we have already met with the fire chief and been over the general concepts of the plan. He has no difficulty with what he's seen so far, but we don't have a written set of comments from him yet. During the meeting, there was some concern expressed and a condition relative to turns associated with the new driveway. If you look sharp at that sort of aerial representation, right there, that's the existing driveway into the property, and we are entering there and doing a fairly sharp left-hand turn at that point to start our progress up the hill to the main floor or second-floor entry. The concerns were related to traffic movement and traffic congestion in that area. We are advised by our traffic engineer that, in fact, the layout is such, the width of all the drives is such, that this area can be striped and organized, and it's turning... Such that the turning movements do not represent a congestion problem, so long as, of course, people stay in the lanes as they will be marked. So we are expecting that following this hearing in relatively short order, our traffic engineer, Vanessa Associates, will be meeting with the city transportation engineer to assure him that this issue will be properly addressed. Another condition was that the applicant, Duville, work with the resident abutting the project to the west, and indeed, right there, there is a single-family home, which appears to be the closest single-family residence to the property, and they had a number of concerns. Since the planning board meeting, Naomi and I have been to that property, met with the owners, David and Elaine Farrow, discussed conditions with them. One of their concerns, in fact, all of their concerns are legitimate, one is particularly pertinent, which is that this new driveway, right there, comes up the hill and sort of aims car headlights at their property. Indeed, this is true. We stood in their front yard, looked down the hill. It was pretty easy to see where the driveway was going to be and how it might affect the property. We have assured them that we will be working with them for a planting scheme that will screen any and all such approaching headlights. However, the only part of this project that can be seen from their property, or rather, the only part of their property that has a view of this project, is the very frontmost portion of the yard. We toured the yard with them, went into their house, and so on. And from all other parts of their property, including their front steps and even their second-floor windows, it's the nature of the terrain and the existing undisturbed landscape, such that the project will be virtually, or literally, or entirely unseeable from their such that the project will be virtually, or literally, or entirely unseeable from their property, and certainly from their backyard, which is the private space they value the most. So they had other concerns, as for sight lighting, for instance, and we have done photo metrics that clearly demonstrate there will be no light spillover beyond the minimal lighting required to keep the driveway safe, we will not be floodlighting the property or spreading light around the neighborhood. They had concerns about noise and dust and the general disruption of construction. Those are legitimate concerns, this is construction, it will not be an imperceptible project, but for many reasons, not just to protect their interests, but to protect the interests of all the current patients at Duville Senior Care, we will, and to satisfy the interests of the Department of Public Health, which will be inspecting this project's progress from time to time, we will be controlling noise, dust, hours of operation, and so on, to minimize the nuisance to all parties. We have also met with the Potucket Neighborhood, Potucketville Neighborhood Association, and reviewed such matters as truck approaches and street parking management, of which there'll be none, and so on. The final concern that the planning board has was, we continue to work with the Department of Planning and Development to finalize various features of the landscape plan, some are related to plantings in parking areas, some are related to screening of trash containers. Incidentally, all of the trash containers are back here and will be completely unseeable from any point on the street or anyone else's property. Nonetheless, we will be putting screens around those containers as required by your zoning ordinance. So those were the conditions of the planning board, as we understand them, and our intent is to work with the city and the neighbors to achieve satisfactory compliance with all those conditions. That is the status of our project at the moment, we are available for any questions you may have.
Okay, it appears from, we have an exhaustive list from the planning board that you've addressed just about every point, as well as from the city engineer's office. One thing, there's a driveway permit required, I'm sure you know that, right? And I don't think you can pull your building permit without anything here. So I guess my question is, are there any conditions that we need to impose on here for you to get the special permit, that the planning board hasn't already done so? And it doesn't appear to me that there's anything, you still have to go back before the planning board, correct?
We do, and of course, the building department for all the necessary permits.
Right, and then there's an enforcement, so I don't think that there's anything that I can think of that we need to put on here as a further condition, but if the homeowners, their neighbors or butters are here, I'd like to hear from them as well, but... Anybody here wishes to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Mark?
Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals, my name is Mark Goldman, 58 Oakland Street, Lowell, Mass. Wish to be recorded in favor of this. I spoke last, excuse me, I spoke last Monday before the planning board in favor of this. It is a good project, thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to speak in favor, sir?
Yes, Raymond Ho, co-chairman of the Potucketville Citizens Council, and Duville has met with us on numerous occasions. The architects have met with us and gone over all the projects, and to this date, we've only had one neighbor that's voiced any concern, which they've already met with to take care of her issues. So from our standpoint, it's a goal, and we're looking forward to seeing it happen.
Thank you, sir.
Hope you support it. Thank you.
Anybody else wishes to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? Okay, in hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed, anybody here wishes to speak in opposition? In opposition to this petition? And hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed, are the butters here, sir, that you?
No, I do not see them, we certainly invited them to come and speak. They may be satisfied with what we've done with them so far.
Okay, well, the fact that they're not here, probably, you're right about that, so... All right, Corey, anything?
Yes, so you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to commend all those that were involved, it's an outstanding project. Duville Manor has always been a great part of the city for many, many years, and this project certainly reflects that. It's a project that only enhances the lives of some elder residents and the neighborhood as well, in my mind. But the Farrell's home, the direct butler next door is a concern, with headlights and that, and I'm sure that will get resolved, so, I mean, the planning board covered just about everything. I want to commend them, I think they did a great job, and you have my blessings, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
Kevin, anything?
I know, Mr. Chairman, I think it's a very good project, and fully support it.
And Rick?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, again, echoing everybody's comments, this is a great project out there, for Duville Manor, to take over those beds from Lowell General is a great thing to do for us as a city and for taking care of the elderly. Full support of this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and again, I think it's an allowed use in that area with the request for a special permit, I think it fits perfectly in with what they've done over there and fits in with the neighborhood. They've met with all the neighborhood groups, and some of butters who had some concerns, and went through exhaustive planning board process, so I'm going to support it as well, so I need a motion?
Yes, so you, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call?
Approve. Approved. Approve.
Approve. So you've been unanimously approved, I just need you to come up and sign the plan, and good luck with the project. Kim, do we have minutes to approve, I don't, okay, so there's no minutes to approve tonight? Any other business, Mr. Cork?
Nope, with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.